We'll call to order the City of Douglasville City Council Regular Meeting for tonight, which is September the 20th. Our invocation will be done by Reverend Brian Barry Hill of Heritage Baptist Church. And after that, we'll have the Pledge Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Let us pray. Dear Lord in heaven and Father, we come to you again today, just so thankful, Lord, that we can call upon your name. Thank the Lord for each one that's gathered here tonight. I just pray, Lord, that you just be with us. I pray, Lord, for our community. I pray for this city, Lord, that you bring unity, not just in our community, Lord, but in this room. I pray for unity. And I pray that everything that's on the agenda today would be done decently and in order, and, uh, Lord peacefully. I just ask your presence here tonight. I ask you to lead God and direct in our life and have your will and way. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
(inaudible)
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. And Pastor Barry Hill, we appreciate the invocation and taking time to come out this evening. We do have announcements and presentations, and, um, we will go through, um, a presentation that we have before I do the announcements, uh, to welcome you to our regular meeting. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm Mayor of the City of Douglasville. Our presentation is a presentation by Elevate Douglas Economic Partnership to Bang Energy and the City of Douglasville to recognize the area development for the Silver Shovel Award. We'll have our Executive Director, Chris Pumphrey, come from the Economic Development Authority. Welcome, Chris. Give us your name and rec- uh, name for the record, please.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, everyone. Chris Pumphrey, President, Elevate Douglas Economic Partnership, 8512 Bowden Street, Douglasville, Georgia. Um, it's an honor. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing us to be on the agenda this evening to present this, uh, this award. Um, this, this, the city, the leadership of the city, the staff, and everyone have been amazing to work with and really have shown, you know, how putting plans in place and executing the plans can result in, and have great results. Um, when we set forth some years ago, um, we had an amazing project, probably five or six years ago, as you all remember, what was the Keurig Green Mountain Project? And they made a significant investment, you know, here in the city of Douglasville. And that project unfortunately did not come to fruition. Um, so we worked some years, um, on trying to refill that facility, but with the right type of company, the right type of project that, that was fit for what that investment was made for. So we were fortunate enough to work with the folks at Keurig, to then work with the new property owners there, to market this facility for, um, a food, food processing or pharmaceutical-like operation to take place there. And so we had a commitment from the owners, they had a commitment from us, that we were going to work with them, that we were going to be partners with them. And that's all we, we committed to, was finding the right company for that facility. And fortunately enough, we have. Um, and that is Bang Energy, um, a vital pharmaceutical company. Vital Pharmaceuticals invested, was investing over $250 million right here in the city of Douglasville, creating over 600 new jobs, paying on average $25 an hour, which is about $5 an hour above our countywide average wage. So an amazing project. This project, um, was awarded the Silver Shovel Award. And I'll give you a little background on that. So as many of you know, uh, Georgia has been ranked the number one state for doing business by Site Selection Magazine for eight years in a row. Concurrently and parallel with that, Area Development Magazine, which is another publication that focuses on site selection and economic development, has also awarded Georgia, um, the number one state for doing business. Every year, they go through a list of projects throughout the country, and they award certain states, you know, a gold shovel or a silver shovel, um, for the project activity that takes place in that, in that state. Georgia, for this past year, was awarded the Silver Shovel Award, and so they outlined a number of projects that took place all throughout the state, all throughout the state of Georgia, that these were the top 10 projects from the state. And of that list, they choose one that they say is the project of the year for the state of Georgia. Well, fortunately, we, Douglasville, was selected when awarded that Silver Shovel Award for the Georgia non- the Georgia Project of the Year, for the Bang Energy Project. And so what they do is they send us this beautiful plaque and silver shovel that we are here to present to you all this evening for your commitment to economic development. And this is just a testament to all the hard work and commitment that you all put in, uh, to, to supporting economic development and really supporting the growth of the community. And so that's what this award is all about. And so we're grateful and thankful to be able to present it to you. Furthermore, we were able to, um, talk to the leadership at Bang, and now the, the leadership is here. And so they wanted to celebrate this with, with you all as well. Um, we did some videos, uh, just kind of some testimonial videos, um, talking about the project. And so I'm going to step aside for a second, and I'm going to let the CEO, Jack Owak, come up and, and share a few words with you all.
... a hand as he comes for investing in our community.[534.41][534.41](applause) Please give us your name, Mr. CEO. We know you, but, uh, my ki- my children especially know you. They're 18, 20, and 22. They love Bang Energy. So if you can give us your name and address for the record, and then please say whatever you'd like to.
Okay. Thank you very much. I didn't prepare anything to say, but, um, I'm just going to be sincere and spontaneous here. My name is Jack Owak. I am the CEO of Bang Energy. And, uh, we're excited to be here. Chris, thank you very much. Uh, your entire team, Rochelle, has been amazing. Um, even Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller, he's even stepped in. And all you guys were here to meet us, about 20 people. Uh, even when we first met you, you rolled out the red carpet. Uh, 12 people met us at the airport. It's just mind-blowing. I can tell you sincerely that that doesn't happen in every state. It happened in Georgia, it happened in Phoenix. We're from South Florida, and we have close to a million square feet in South Florida, but even so, even still, we, uh, decided to do, uh, business here in Georgia. One of the things I know you said about salary, because everybody's interested about that, right now, we had to do our mean salary because we competed against this, um, other project, again, it's Amazon, biggest company in the world in South Florida, and we won. And our, our mean salary was, um, $61,000. And it's going up and up. And so we wouldn't, we'd rather over, uh, under-promise and over-deliver to you guys. And we believe the salaries will be north of there, because it's a lot of specialist people here in Georgia. The workforce is great. Rochelle, you've been amazing.
Oh, thank you.
Brian Kemp, I text him on a daily basis, and I told everybody that I'm keeping him in control for you guys.[636.16][636.16](laughing) But no, he's also been very welcoming, very nice, and helped us out with state licensing for alcohol. Don't get mad at me, Rochelle.
I'm not mad, Jack.[646.29][646.29](laughing)
Uh, but everything, um, east of the Mississippi will be produced here in the Atlanta facility. The great thing is, we had a practice run in Phoenix where we have the fastest canning lines in America, producing 3,600 cans a minute.
Ooh.
A minute. It's so fast, when you film it, you could barely see. If you guys follow me on Instagram, you can see these posts all the time. But we're bringing the Bang to Lithia Springs. And when we bring the Bang to Douglasville, what we're doing is something different. Everybody knows we have a thing called bigger, bolder, and more brilliant. So whatever we do, what we did in Phoenix is great, but what we do in Georgia has to be bigger, bolder, and more brilliant. We're very serious about that. So we're going to be, have the only can, i- i- it from raw aluminum, it rolls the raw aluminum into cans and paints them. And it's going to be the only one in the world that does 4,000 cans a minute. Rolls and paints, and it gets ready to fill. So we're super excited. So the can, um, the people that make this machine, they know our philosophy, to go bigger, bolder, more brilliant. And they partnered with us and said, hey, in Georgia, then let's, let's introduce, this is the first one in the world that'll be introduced here. We're super excited. We did get off to a little slow start because of COVID.
Yes.
Uh, but, but everybody's gathering, supply chain and everything like that. And, um, we're, we're going to produce the cans here. That's super exciting, just from raw aluminum, so that we don't have to worry about sourcing cans from other countries, which is always a problem and everything. And, uh, we're real close. It only took us about an hour to get here on the jet from Fort Lauderdale, and Rochelle is thinking about flying back with us.[742.23][742.23](laughing)
Put the swoop in my husband, I'm going to come up here.
And, um, if you guys want, I can answer any questions. I haven't really prepared anything, um, to talk about, but I can say that the way you guys are treating us is impeccable. Uh, we're really excited. And again, this doesn't happen in other states, I'm telling you, especially the state we're from. Uh, kind of like Jesus, hey, wherever you're from, they don't recognize you.
And recognize, and appreciate you.
And in the last, uh, this year, we'll, we'll celebrate, uh, so 2019, 2020, 2021. Um, in those three years, this third year, will hit over $5 billion in retail sales.
Wow.
So it's super exciting. But again, we want to fast-track that. We're, we're, we were growing in 2019 at 300%. We got with the, uh, wrong distribution partner, we're changing that right now, and we're, we're going to get back to that. We've, we've been growing, we'll set a record this year in sales, but we want to get back to that 200 to 300% growth that everybody knows us for.
Yes, sir.
So I'm not going to talk anymore, I have nothing else to say, except, but if you guys have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I'll open the, the floor up for the, for the elected officials. If anyone has a questions, any question for Mr. CEO Jack O., please turn your mic on, and I'll recognize you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Uh, I just want to say, you know, thank you for, for all you've done. Thank you for investing in Douglasville and Douglas County. It means a lot, uh, you know, having grown, grown up in an area where, you know, we were struggling in, in Pennsylvania for jobs for years and years. You know, we'd get 10 or 20 jobs that would come in, and that was a reason for an enormous celebration. And you bring 600 well-paying jobs, is fantastic. And that's really an incredible boost to our economy, and a boost to the, uh, morale and attitude of the community. It, it, that's special, and it really means a lot to us. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you too, Terry, and thank you for your, uh, warm reception today and all those carbohydrates we're, uh, we're raring to go down.[858.13][858.13](laughing)
Dr. Burdane, I'd like to hear.
Just wanted to say thank you so much. This is a, a great big deal for, um, our community, both the City of Douglasville and Douglas County. And also, we have the best staff, so you're here, and the, the warmth that you felt today is going to continue. So congratulations, and we're glad that you're here.
Thank you.
Any other council members? Councilmember Sam Davis?
Thanks again. Once again, I just want to say thank you, and, uh, and I know the sign going up saying we are hiring.[891.29][891.29](laughing) Thank you.
Any other council members? Yes, sir. Councilmember Nicole Miller?
Sure.
Wait, are you two related? Because that would be...[903.13][903.13](laughing)
Not at all.[905.13][905.13](laughing)
No, it's Adam and she is about that.
She said that, the way that she...
No way.[909.13][909.13](laughing)
We, we have been...
Tell us how you really feel.[912.13][912.13](laughing)
I just wanted to say, welcome to Douglas County, and thank you so much for believing in our community and coming and investing in our community. It is very wonderful to have such good stuff going on in our community. And also, on a side note, I have a 15-year-old, and he is going to be so jealous that he was not here tonight.[933.82][933.82](laughing) I can't wait to tell him.
Thank you very much, Nicole.
Thank you.
One of the things I wanted to say in closing, and you guys could ask more questions if you want, I was super impressed that you guys actually prayed, uh, a- a- and you, um, you know, you, you used the name Jesus Christ. That's really special to us. I'm a big believer, and, um, I, I'm, I'm very surprised in a forum like this, and super excited to partner with you guys. It's very impressive. I could tell you in West Palm Beach, they're praying, but, uh, it's not the Jesus, and it's, it's very frightening. And so what you guys are doing here is amazing. And, um, I'm, I, I got chills just talking about it. We're big believers and big contributors to the church and everything like that. And so that's very exciting to be partners with you guys.
Thank you so much. Congratulations to another baby in the family, and your son, who's a first responder, police officer. And we're praying for our first responders all over the country. So it's wonderful. City manager, or any other staff, want to say anything?
No, ma'am. We yield the floor to you all.
Okay. Well, we're going to take some photos, if you don't mind. So whomever you would like to have come up from your staff, Jack, can come forward.
Absolutely.
Economic Development, Chamber, Council, all come around and take some photos.
By the way, Chris, thank you very much. Chris has been very helpful.
Oh, thank you so much.[1016.23][1016.23](pause)
(inaudible)[1018.23][1018.23](pause)
Thank you guys very much.
We'll just give a little...[1201.23][1201.23](laughing) You have the magic ring. Oh, gosh. We'll give a couple more minutes, um, to set the council, the chambers back up while our guests leave, and then we'll start with our council meeting as printed on the agenda. All right. Thank you all so much for your patience and that, uh, special presentation. I would like to welcome you again to the City of Douglasville's Regular Voting Meeting. This is a City Council Meeting of Agenda Items, where official action will be taken this evening from the items that were discussed last Thursday in our Legislative Work Session. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the Agenda Items, comments from Citizens and Delegates section, for you to discuss your business. We'll go over a few protocol, um, issues, and then we'll get into the meeting. I would ask that you would please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts only. Um, only one person speaking at a time, please. Please do not applaud or react to speakers. Speak from the audience, or cheer, or carry on conversations. We ask that you would always make your comments directed to the Chair of that committee. And, uh, we're only accepted to, uh, accept public comments on items that are zoning matters. If you have a cell phone or electronic device, social media, all of that, we ask that you would please put that in silent mode, or turn their phones off until after the meeting. Now, the agenda items we handle as the following. The Committee Chairperson will read the agenda item, then that person or representative of that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Myself and councilmembers will possibly ask questions, um, if we had not received that information this past Thursday. After that, Committee Chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There is a maximum of 20 minutes for those in favor of the item, 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes. The City Clerk, Ms. Vicky Acker, will be doing the time for us. When you come to the podium, please give us your name and address for the record, and there is a form that you should have filled out. If you'd like to speak, fill that form out, it's on the desk outside, and hand that to Ms. Vicky, and we'd love to hear from you. This is not a debate or a question-and-answer format, it's just really, uh, for us to hear the information, deliberate, and make our decisions. Um, you do not have repeat performances, you only have one opportunity to speak. And since this is the voting meeting, and we did have a hearing on some of those zoning issues this past Thursday, unless you have new information, you do not need to repeat the information that, um, you would like to talk about. If you have printed material, please give that to Ms. Vicky, um, Acker, our City Clerk, and she will make copies and distribute to the councilmembers and myself. That is, uh, those are all the protocol issues that we have. And now we'll get into the meat of the meeting. Our first item, um, is minutes in, for approval. I will open the floor to approve the minutes of a special meeting for the Millers Rate Legislative Work Session and Executive Session of September 2nd, 2021, and the Committee Meetings and Executive Session and Regular Meetings of September 7th, 2021. Open the floor for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams. It's been properly moved in second to approve the minutes. Uh, to councilmembers, do we see any corrections or concerns about the minutes as presented? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the minutes are unanimously approved. We'll move on now to the Consent Agenda. Open the floor for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. It's been properly moved in second to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Do we see any corrections or concerns as it relates to the Consent Agenda from the elected officials? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Uh, the Consent Agenda is unanimously approved. We'll move on then to committees. Our first committee is Economic Development Committee, and that's chaired by the Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We'll move on then to Finance Committee, chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We want to have one item tonight under Finance.
Mm-hmm.
Adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the issuance of revenue bonds of the Douglasville Convention and Conference Center Authority with respect to the downtown amphitheater project and the terms thereof, and approving certain documents in that connection, including authorization for the mayor to sign an intergovernmental contract, a bond purchase agreement, a disclosure certificate, and a preliminary official statement with the authority and Raymond James and Associates Incorporated and related matters. Ms. Woodward and Ms. Karen Callen. Ms. Callen?
Thank you, Chairman Adams. Um, last Thursday, we have presented what the authorizing resolution would include, um, the documents that, and the summary of those documents.
Mm-hmm.
Tonight, we have Mr. Ben Brooks, who is our Bond Counsel, and he is available if you have any legal questions about bond issuance. And we also have Mr. Bill Camp from Raymond James. And you will see in your agenda attachment that was newly uploaded today that there is a pricing summary, and I will defer to Mr. Camp and Ms. Callen to explain what this pricing summary is.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward.
And Bill has, um, passed out a handout, but it also, it should be loaded up on your agenda. Here's Mr. Bill Camp.
How are you, Mr. Campbell?
I'm great.
Can you give us again your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Bill Camp, 620 River Chase Ridge. I live in Sandy Springs.
Thank you, sir.
First off, thank you for allowing us to work for you on this transaction. And, um, I know I speak for Mr. Brooks, that, um, we work with teams of people, a lot of other people, that helped you today and the months leading up to this. And so we, we're honored to be representing our firm. And, um, I prepared a little handout for you. I know you have a lot on your agenda. I'm going to just hit the high notes, and I'm, but I'm happy to get into the details if anybody has any questions. Page four of the handout, um, our bonds are going to be paid back over time. The principal's going to mature in '23, and then the last maturity will be through '47. So 25 years, average of about 14 and a half years are all-in cost. That is, when you take interest rate, cost of issuance, is, is a fixed rate of 224 for the life of that 25-year bond issue. So if you all are happy with the terms, nothing's going to change for the next 25 years. So we know, we know what the rates are. Um, again, bonds mature over time, the, the lowest-yielding investor's going to get a return of about .2%, and the highest-yielding maturity out there in '47 is 40, is 2.43%. On average, our pricing, I'm looking at page six. On average, our pr- our pricing, uh, our yields were, on average, .4% above the AAA scale. That's a little better than where we had been projecting back in February, and again in June. Our all-in cost, our pricing were better than those conservative projections, and our annual debt service is less than, uh, what we projected. And that's also including a little bit more proceeds than, than we had originally thought back in February. The bond issue is $14,375,000. The bonds were sold at a little greater than face value. Um, you all will net $15,361,000 deposited into your project account. Um, and to the extent that we have any cost of issuance, I'm on page seven, if we have any cost of issuance remaining, that will stay in the, in the project fund as well. Um, we will close the bond issue on October 19th, but the agreement is, is with your blessing. The, the numbers will not change for the next month. Um, Ms. Woodward and Mr. Brooks will undertake the validation process, which is a requirement under Georgia law, and that's the reason that we're closing in October. Um, again, these are fixed-rate bonds, nothing will move. You have the ability to pay them off early, or potentially refinance them, all that You have the ability to pay them off early or potentially refinance them, although I wouldn't hold my breath, you know? In your authority, the Convention and Conference Center Authority met today at 4:00. They received the same information you have. We went through it. They adopted the bond resolution and signed the bond purchase agreement, and what you all would be providing is the legal security, an intergovernmental contract with the authority backed by your full faith and credit pledge. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm sure Mr. Brooks would as well. And also, one more plug or one more statement of fact, your staff did a wonderful job, and they've had a lot of extra work put on them for the last two or three months. And very recently, you all were upgraded to AA, and I think that there is nobody that can claim responsibility for that other than your staff, and of course, you're, you're the ultimate managers of the city too, but very fortunate timing and excellent work by people that, that are working for you. So it's, it's an honor to work with them.
Thank you, Mr. Camp. We appreciate your continued working with us over the years, many, many years. Now, I don't know how long your tenure is as far as being our bond counsel, but it's, it goes back many years, decade.
It's been a while, yes, sir.
We appreciate that.
You caught me off guard. It's been '09, I believe, was the first bond issue I did for you.
Well, I know you've been around as long as I have, and I've been around almost 10 years now, so we do appreciate your continued hard work, and, and we do, we do thank our staff for everything that they have done. This is great news as far as I'm concerned with the rates that we can demand, that being extremely low, and, and I'm with you, Mr. Camp. I don't know why you would ever think you'd be able to refinance anything lower than this as far as our interest rate. But I'll open the floor. Are there any comments from any member of the council or Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor, we'll start with you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Camp, for the report. It's encouraging, very encouraging, and thank you for encouraging the staff as well. You're great to work with as well. I did have a quick question. You said that we could pay off the bonds early. Is there, are there any penalties if we decide to do that?
No, ma'am. We, the, the bonds have a, what we call a call feature, the ability to pay off early starting February 1, 2031. That's a little less than 10 years.
Yes, sir.
And there's no penalty, just the accrued interest due through that day.
Okay. And Mr. Dotson, do you have anything? You're the guru, so you have any? Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Camp. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You said the call is, is, was it 10 years out, so?
Yes, sir, a little less than 10 years.
But we can't call before that, though.
You could still execute, there are still mechanisms available to you to, in theory, refinance or in theory, pay them off early, but any of those mechanisms would require that we pay the interest through that '31.
The pure call is not until 10 years.
Right.
And the, the premium on the price of the bonds, is that also part, considered part of the financing, or is that basically a bonus to the city?
It's your money. It, it, premium plus principal amount, the purchase price, those dollars are still your dollars. In other words, it's a...
Our debt will still be the original face value of the bond, so basically, it's like we've got it.
You're right.
We made a profit before we even signed the papers, essentially, so to speak.
Well...
On the borrowed money.
You sold your bonds at greater than face value. That's, that's pretty common in the current market.
In municipal bonds, you're talking?
In municipal bonds, that's very common. Yes, sir.
That's not a bad deal, though.
Not a bad, not a bad thing at all, you know, sir.
Thank you.
Others? Anyone?
Just to say that your negotiation on the bonds is absolutely excellent, and you mentioned that the delivery date, which is also the closing date, is October 19th, and that is by Georgia laws. Is that correct?
There's some steps we have to follow. Validation in local superior court is at least, well, it takes 20 days, so we're giving ourselves a little bit of cushion, and, and that's, that's the reason for the delay. But none of the parts are moving. In other words, interest rates won't change, payments won't change based on your authorization this evening. That's, that's the final fixed deal forever.
Great, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Anyone else? Are there any questions for the other gentleman that's here with us? Anyone? Would he like to say anything in particular? Just give the opportunity. Okay, thank you so much. Again, we appreciate all you all have done, Mr. Camp. We will go forward then, and again, I will mention Councilman Davis. I know this is a happy day for him because he's worked very hard on bringing something like this to our downtown area, and we're looking forward to that. But at this time, if there are no other comments or questions, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve item 21-452.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Councilman Davis, that was fast. He was eager.
Maybe I should have asked him to make the motion.
Amphitheaters coming.
Yes, sir. It's been promptly moved in second to approve item 21-452. Do we have any additional comments or questions? Any, anything else to deliberate as it concerning this item from city council members? Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 21-452 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all that we have tonight under Finance.
Thank you so much, sir. We'll move on then to Housing and Community Affairs Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Housing and Community Affairs.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome, dear.
We'll move on then to item number 10, which is Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No, I understand, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. 11, item 11 is Personal and Organization Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We, we have two items tonight, and...
Yes, sir.
I'm wondering, based on the highlight, the second item is highlighted prior to the first one.
It is.
Am I supposed to go in that order, or?
You see it, City Clerk?
I just wasn't sure. I'm gonna read the first item then.
Okay.
Item A is Mayor Rochelle Robinson's nomination of Christopher Bass for the appointed position of Parks and Recreation Director and the city council's vote on ratification of said nomination. Ms. Hampton?
You all interviewed Mr. Christopher Bass a couple of weeks ago. He is currently the Assistant Director for Parks and Recreation and the mayor's nomination for the candidate for this role, Mayor Robinson.
Thank you so much, City Manager. Thank you, Mr. Bass, for everything that you have done, and I would just ask if you give a brief summary to the, some of the citizens that may be watching, just to talk about yourself. I'll brag on you just a little bit, and then you can talk about yourself, and I really appreciate the city council lead, just supporting my nomination. If you decide to appoint him as the chair for Parks and Recreation, I appreciate your consideration, but Mr. Bass has been, we have not missed a beat in Parks and Recreation with our former director moving on in his career, and this was an opportunity as a deputy, and we didn't notice, it was just seamless that you have been able to continue with parks. You had come to us from Columbus, Georgia, where they have lots going on in their downtown. They have like a river, some kind of canoeing going on down there. It's just really with Columbus State and the convention bureaus, a whole lot of things going on, visitor and tourism, and you have a lot of innovative ideas. You've been with us for about three years, working on your master's degree, and just talked to us a little. You managed 150 people in Columbus. I'm telling everything, but you can just talk about yourself a little bit.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
And as a council, like you mentioned, I am from Columbus, Georgia, born and raised, and it was there where I found my passion for Parks and Recreation. Got a chance to work through the system there, starting in 2008, worked my way up from a frontline recreation professional to finally leading the division, one of our largest divisions in Columbus, before leaving and venturing out to the city of Douglasville. Got here in 2018, and I, to be honest with you, I had no idea that I'd be in this position now when I moved here, but we've been able to really do some great work since I've gotten here, along with the great team of professionals that we have, so I'm just looking forward to continuing, moving this, this, this great city and this great field forward.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bass. I will open the floor for council members to make any statements that they would like, but I would add that you have gained the respect of your colleagues in the Parks and Recreation Department within the City of Douglasville, Douglas County, and the surrounding area, and Mayor Tomlinson gives a great recommendation for you, as well as one of your former educators, Carolyn Randolph. So it's just exciting that we have talent in the city, and, and again, you have innovative ideas for equitable services, not just race, but age and gender, and mothers with children, just all kinds of things, so it's exciting. But I open the floor for any, yes, sir, Councilman Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Bass, for your previous service and for your interest in this position. I have been extremely impressed with you from the first day I met you, and the, especially the way that you have led this department through the pandemic and particularly since you stepped up as, as acting. And then again, in your interview, I could not have been more impressed, and I have to say, this is going to be probably the happiest and easiest vote I have ever cast on council.
Thank you, sir.
Aw, that's kind. Any other comments? Yes, sir, Councilman Davis.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. As vice chair partner, Rick Chris, I really appreciate you. I tell you every day when I see you, I really appreciate what you're doing for a great city and communities. Can't wait for these parks to get finished.
Yes, sir.
Renovation. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Any others?
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Congratulations, and of course, like the mayor mentioned, Parks and Recreation have not missed a beat, and you stepped right in, and you've just done wonderful. Your, your mannerism and your kindness that you give to all of the citizens in each park, and the citizens know you by name, even the little football players know Mr. Chris. So I just want to say congratulations. It's very well deserved.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. We'll continue. Rep. Tim, you have any?
Yeah, I'll just add to what my colleagues have said, and I think one word that really comes to my mind is professionalism, and you approach the job as a, as a true professional, and you throw yourself into it full force, and, and we really appreciate that because it, it does reflect the, the level of professionalism we see throughout this city, and you definitely match that, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rep. Tim. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bass, I just want to thank you for, first of all, placing yourself in a position to be considered and for all the hard work that you did coming to this point. I know that you are stepping in, should this vote go in your favor, you're stepping in to, to fill some big shoes for Travis leaving us, but at the same time also with a lot of challenges as far as our employee situation. I know that we're, we're facing some challenges in numbers there, but I trust that you'll be able to handle that, and, and I thank you for your, your dedication and your determination thus far, so best wishes to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. Councilman Miller? Nicole?
Mr. Bass, I just wanted to thank you for stepping up to fill the role when that opening became available and taking the opportunity to show us what you were really made of. You seem to really have proven yourself, and then you came in here throughout the interview process and answered all of our questions just really wonderfully. You've proven, even in your home bank and the community, that you really want to be here and to be part of this community, and that's just really awesome, so I'm glad to have you here, and thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Miller, as well. Coach Watts, I'll let you have the last word. That's why, I'm saving the best for last, and so I just wanted to ask, Chris, if you would tell the citizens about our accreditation that we received while you were the deputy working alongside of Mr. Landrum and your professional affiliations.
Yes, ma'am. So under the leadership of Mr. Landrum, we were able to join the ranks of the most elite Parks and Recreation agencies in this country, joining and obtaining the CAPRA accreditation for Parks and Recreation. This is something that is not easy to go through. We've been, we've put the hard work, starting in 2018 under Mr. Landrum's leadership, and he had a vision, and we, we were able to pull it together, so we're excited that that positions us for success in the future. It doesn't just stop there. You know, we, we have plans to continue to go on. Like you mentioned, our social equity plan, being able to really serve this community, and that accreditation helped position us to be able to do that, so.
Yes, sir. And your accreditation, that you're a member of?
Yes, ma'am. So personally, I, and several of our other professionals in Parks and Recreation are certified through the National Recreation and Parks Association as a certified Parks and Recreation Professional. That is a credential that many Parks and Recreation professionals have around the state, and it just shows that we're able to lead. We're the process where we obtain CEUs, we're actually getting ready to go through our national conference this week in order to recertify, so yes, ma'am, just looking forward to adding even more credentials for our entire team and Parks and Recreation.
Yes, sir. We had some great applicants, and we're, we have confidence, and I have lots of confidence in you, and we appreciate you stepping forward. That's all, that's all we had, Mr. Chairman, so you have the last word.
Chris, I was there a couple of years ago when you came and interviewed to come to the city. We were smart enough to hire you then, and we're, we're continuing to show our high IQ, keep a good employees. And I just, I wanted to say some, you know, you're innovative, you, you, you think outside the box. That's very important for the job that you have. Just used the pool this summer, the issues we had opening the pool, and you came up with some other ideas for the kids, and just, you know, appreciate, appreciate that, that you're a hard worker and continue working hard, and we're looking forward to seeing that hard work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so we don't have to vote with the, the papers or mark anything, Ms. Chelsea, Ms. Jackson? All right, Coach, then it's your recommendation, what you want to do.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to, to move that we approve item 21-439. Feels kind of funny to say it that way.
I know, usually we have ballots.
I make a motion that we approve.
Yes, sir. There's a motion to approve Mr. Chris Bass for the appointment for the position of Parks and Recreation Director by the chairman, Councilmember Coach Chris Watts, to approve item 21-439. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I think it was, City Clerk, did you get whomever? Looked like it was a three-way tie. Councilman Davis, the vice chair. It's been promptly moved in second to approve item 21-439. Do we have any more comments or questions from council members? Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 21-439 is unanimously approved. Congratulations, Mr. Bass.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, I'd be embarrassed if I didn't mention, I have a supportive team. I know a lot of them are watching virtually with us, but we have a great team in Parks and Recreation, a team of subject matter experts, and I'm looking forward to continue to work with them and doing great things.
Thank you so much. I'll see you at West Pines and come and play some golf.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Item B, approve travel and training expenses for Councilman Sam Davis to attend the September 28th through the 30th, 2021 Chairman's Club Washington DC fly-in sponsored by the Douglas County Chamber, with funds for these expenses to come from Mayor Robinson's training budget. And again, Ms. Hampton, turn it over to you.
Yes, sir. As part of the city's membership with the Chamber of Commerce and Mayor Robinson being a member of the Chairman's Club, she's given the privilege to attend the Chamber fly-in. Her schedule will not allow her to participate this year, and neither will the Mayor Pro Tem's, so her selection is Councilman Davis. So with approval of this item, Councilwoman Davis will be able to take advantage of participating in this event on the mayor's behalf.
Thank you, Ms. Hampton. Do we have any comments or anything? Mayor, do you, do you have anything further on this, or?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I, I wanted to thank Councilwoman Davis. He is gonna be a great representative for the city council. I apologize, as the city manager said, my schedule's a conflict, and my schedule have a few speaking engagements that I promised, and I didn't realize it was a mix-up in my schedule, but I was able to see Senator Ossoff and Senator Warnock when they were here just maybe three weeks ago, and talked to Congressman Scott, and so our other delegation, and, but I apologize, I'm not able to go, and the Mayor Pro Tem has a conflict because he's a natural person to step in my stead, so thank you so much, Councilman Davis, for being willing to go to DC and represent us, and I know you'll do a wonderful job, and I appreciate the support of the council if you would so support him and ratify one of you would so support him and ratify one of our colleagues going in my stead for the Chamber's fly-in.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Davis, do you have anything?
No, I will represent, continue to represent our city and all the communities that's represented here in our great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Councilman Davis. If there are no other further questions or comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 21-466.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been promptly moved in second to approve item 21-466. Do we have any additional comments as relates to this item from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 21-466 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Those are all the items we had tonight under Personnel and Organization.
Thank you so much, Coach. We'll move on to Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have three items tonight under Planning and Development.
Yes, sir.
Item A, hold a public hearing, consider a request for change in zoning from R2 Single Family Residential District to PUD Planned Unit Development District for 83.3 acres at Northeast Intersection, Presley Mill Road and Timber Ridge Drive, and Land Lot 54, District One, Section Five, Parcel Two. The application by the Revive Land Group, Carol Neville Allison, managing partner, Mr. Ryan Anderson is here with us. Our legal counsel has instructed us on this item that after further investigation over the weekend of our advertising procedure, I'm going to ask Mr. Dodson if he would to explain the situation on this item. And we are being told that we do not need to take any further action at this level, but we need to remand it back to the Planning Committee. And I'm going to ask Mr. Dodson to explain the reason for that as far as our advertising on this item. Mr. Dodson?
Yes, Mr. Adams. At the last meeting, a citizen raised concerns concerning the deficiency of the legal advertisement for the Planning and Zoning Board meeting. Under the city's zoning ordinance, not the Zoning Procedures Act, your ordinance requires that before the city council can take action, there must be a meeting of the P and Z Board to consider the item. The ordinance also requires that that hearing before the P and Z Board must be advertised at least 15 days prior to the hearing, and not more than 45. In this particular case, the advertisement in the paper, the proper advertisement took place on September the 2nd, I think. P and Z Board meeting was on the 15th, which was not 15 days. There was an advertisement in the paper on August the 24th, but unfortunately, that ad had a clerical error that rendered it invalid. So I believe the council's only course of action is to remand this back to the P and Z Board for a hearing after same as advertised pursuant to the requirements of the statute.
Thank you, Mr. Dodson. As you all can see, this is not something that is, something that we plan. It's not something that we think lightly of. I know that as of Thursday night, we thought that we were in compliance, and then staff, our staff attorney and Mr. Dodson both have investigated it further. And so we will take no action on this item tonight. It will be remanded back to the planning body, and it will then come back to the city council at a later time. So, Mr. Anderson, we don't need any, I don't guess we need anything on this item tonight from you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, consider a request for plat, Mr. Dodson, is that sufficient? Are we okay with that? Ms. Woodland, you're good with that? Okay. Trying to follow legal here.
Thank you.
Consider a request for plat approval for the purpose of combining into one lot for a total of 26.422 acres at 1250 Blair's Bridge Road, District 18, Section 2, Land Lot 580, Parcel 6, and Land Lot 581, Parcel 2, Land Lot 616, Parcel 1, and Land Lot 617, Parcel 2. Application by East Group Properties LP. Mr. Anderson?
Ryan Anderson, 6701 Church Street. We don't have any new information on this item.
Thank you, sir. We did have information on this provided to us. Did you have something other, Mr. Anderson?
No, sir.
Okay, okay. On Thursday, we did have a discussion about it. Basically, it's a combination of two pieces of property into one, so that they can then go forward with their development. Is that correct, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir.
Is there any additional questions that council or Madam Mayor would have concerning the item? Seems to be straightforward from this end, and we appreciate your input on that, Mr. Anderson. If there are no other questions or comments, I'll make a motion that we approve item 21-340.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. I think Councilman Estes. It's been promptly moved in second to approve item 21-340. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item B is approved. 21-340 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We'll go into item C. Consider a request for final plat approval for the purpose of subdividing into two lots, 16.15 acres at Timber Ridge Drive, Land Lot 54, District One, Section Five, Parcel 185. Application by Hughes Ray Company Incorporated. Mr. Anderson?
Ryan Anderson, 6701 Church Street. We have no new information on this item.
Mr. Anderson, if you would, just for the record, just make sure that everyone, our viewing audience and everyone knows that this, these are two different items on Timber Ridge. If you'd just give us just a quick overview of what this development entails on this particular item.
This particular item is associated with the Harmony at Timber Ridge Senior Development for a senior retirement community. The applicant has one lot of 16.15 acres, and he wants to subdivide it into two lots. The development would take place on parcel number two, and he plans to sell parcel number one.
All right. And so everything is in order for that final plat to be approved as far as staff is concerned?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any comment or question? Madam Mayor? Anyone on the council? Seeing none? All right. If there is no other, then I will make a motion that we approve item 21-441.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. The chairman has already asked for any comments or questions, and we didn't have any. So all of those in favor of approving 21-441, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 21-441 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all that we have tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate, I'm sure the council does as well, all the hard work that's gone into this committee. And thank you to Legal for helping us with the first item A. And we apologize for any inconvenience to our development community and the citizens, but we want to do things decently and in order, so we appreciate that. We'll move on then to Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. We'll move on then to Public Relations Committee, chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item this evening.
Yes, sir.
To adopt a resolution to recognize Georgia Cities Week, October 3rd through 9th, 2021, and to encourage residents to support the celebration and corresponding activities. And once again, we have Ms. Emily Hardaway to discuss this for us.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Emily Hardaway, 6695 Church Street. Per Councilman Estes's request, I'll just repeat what I said on Thursday for those in our viewing audience who did not hear. This item is to adopt a resolution for Georgia Cities Week, and the week will be October 3rd through 9th, and the theme is Georgia City: Shaping the Future. We will be giving gift bags out to all of the local second graders in lieu of them coming for a field trip to City Hall. The week will be bookended by two different city events. On Saturday, October 2nd, we will have a very fun event, Halloween Parking Lot Bingo, and it will be held at Hunter Park. We did this event back in the spring, and it was great, and it was a lot of fun, and it's also COVID-safe, because people are free to stay in their cars to play bingo. If anyone wants to participate in that, they can go online and register on our website, and we also just posted a social media post today with more information. The second event will be the Douglasville Police Department Fall Festival, and that will be held on Saturday, October 9th, at the police department. They'll have vendors, music, and it will be a lot of fun. And so we want to encourage citizens to join us at either of these events and help make Georgia Cities Week a success.
Thank you, Ms. Hardaway. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. I wanted to thank staff and Ms. Jackson, and especially, they showed me the bag that we're going to give the second graders. It's full of goodies, even the police department. So we appreciate the coloring book and all the other items that you're giving to the second graders. We regret, because of COVID, we can't meet with them in person. That's where I got my filler little hugs from the second graders, but I'm sending virtual hugs. And we appreciate your quick response and getting those bags together to give to them and let the second graders, encourage them and let them experience and know a little bit about municipal government and that the community cares about them, the state of government. So thank you so much. That's all I had. Councilman Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Anyone else?
You're welcome.
Okay. I will, I have to say, I already know my wife has got two carloads of people coming for bingo.
Oh, good. I can't wait to see them. It's going to be a lot of fun. We're going to have costume contests and all sorts of things.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I would like to put forth a motion to approve item 21-445.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Mr. Representative Tim. It's been promptly moved in second to approve item 21-445. Do we have any additional comments or questions? I don't see any. Looks like everyone's shaking their head. This is good. So all those in favor of approving 21-445, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 21-445 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That is all we have this evening under Public Relations.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on then to the next committee, item number 15, which is Public Safety. That's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
I just have no business, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Davis. We'll move on to Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee, chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you so much, Councilman Watts. We'll move on then to item 17, which is Technology Committee. That's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Transportation Committee, chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No business tonight in Transportation.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Is there any other business to come before committees or council tonight from council members? Thank you. I don't see any. Then we'll move to update it, updates from city staff. Our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dodson.
No other business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dodson. Our staff attorney, Ms. Lynn Woodward.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. The police department, Major Davison.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, sir. Our city manager, Ms. Marsha Hampton.
Yes, ma'am. Just to remind you all that we do have executive session following this meeting, as well as the city clerk has asked me to remind you all about clicking your voting preference on, in the voting system, so, to allow her to capture it for the record.
Okay. Thank you so much, city manager. Do we have any staff reports?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Comments from citizens and delegates? If you have sustained the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, we encourage you to come forward. You should have filled out a speaker's card that, they're located on the desk. If you come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to speak. We'd love to hear from you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Shay Johnson, 5481 Summer Mill Road, Douglasville. I attended September Saturdays on this past Saturday, and as I was walking around, I stopped by the table, Daughters of the Revolution. And she just brought to my attention that she was able to get this beautiful proclamation from the county. However, when she reached out to the city, she was not able to get the same information. She said she reached out on August 24th, made several phone calls, emails, but no follow-up. So I just felt like with this being our Constitution, the Constitution is celebrated each year on September 17th, and then that's Constitution Day, and then September 17th to 23rd of each year is Constitution Week. But that wasn't something that was seemingly something that could be done with the city. So she was just kind of wondering a question and wanted to know, and I was concerned as well why that was not handled. So I just wanted to bring that observation.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. Any other comments from citizens and delegates? No? All right, then. Oh, yes, ma'am.
Before we go into executive session, I just wanted to say that the event that the sheriff, that the police department chief Sparks had on Saturday with other police departments, jurisdictions, I mean, a lot of our sister cities and counties. And I just wanted to say, I'm not sure when our salary study will come back, Ms. Hampton. When is it?
Results come back in October, but it's not scheduled for implementation until the[1634.16]